All right, I have 6:30.
Me too.
Okay, let's call the median to order. This is the May 19th, 2020 meeting of materials village city council and to comply with the city regulations and the city managers disaster declaration and tri county health department state home order. This meeting is being conducted virtually by zoom. Could we have a roll call of members, please?
Counselor Stefavi?
Here.
Counselor Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Blum?
Here.
We have full attendance. Do we have anybody signed up, Laura?
We do not.
Nobody, nobody for audience participation. Agenda item four, how about the city boards questions?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item five then consent agenda. Does anybody wish anything to be removed some agenda?
I approve to approve the consent agenda.
Check it again. Roll call on that as well.
Counselor Stefavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
That passes unanimously and thank you to the council members who interviewed the members for the committees appreciate doing that and your recommendations. Next item on the agenda is item eight, which is new business and this would be director Goldie.
You're on mute, Director Goldie.
There, try now.
Good evening, hello.
Hello, Jay. I can hear you now.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Staff is seeking approval for the contract for services with C and L water solutions for the Cherryvale sewer trunk line repair project. This project involves significant, significant work to repair, reconstruct and modernize the trunk line through which city sewage is transported to ensure the health, safety and welfare of its users. The project has been delayed in the past due to cost estillations and staff feels that the cost is only going to continue to escalate and feel that the project can no longer be postponed. The project is more complicated because three other districts, all with different connectors agreements with the city are responsible for a share of these costs. The project was first started in 2008 and the completion has been delayed due to numerous issues with availability of funding and cooperation with these other districts. In 2014, city of council approved new fee structure for the 144 users within the city and the city has all of its funds available for this project. The other, the original agreements with the other districts do not allow for a yearly fee to be collected by the city for maintenance or rehabilitation. Instead, the agreements allow the city to bill for actual maintenance as well as a pro rata share of any major reconstruction. This arrangement has made it difficult to secure funding and get it all to cooperate. Staff begin, began communicating with these districts as far back as 2009. More recently in 2016, 18 and 19, these districts were all given notice of the project with their cost estimated, their, their share of the cost estimated. These costs have continued to rise and we didn't know the actual cost until we bid the project earlier this year. Staff has talked with representatives from each of these other districts after sending their actual costs out to them and because of the increased cost, two of the districts have asked for the ability to pay their portions over time. Cherryvale district would like to pay over a five-year period and Country Homes Metro District would like this year and next year to pay. These are both tentative and these issues would need to go to their board of directors for final approval. Staff feels that working with these districts to pay overtime is a reasonable solution to get the project completed in a timely fashion. Staff has begun working with the city attorney to get the I GAs drafted for these other districts. The ultimate goal of this project is to get the system into a state of repair that is good, a good state of repair and then negotiate with another district to take this over for the city. The city cannot efficiently operate a sewer system for 144 residents in a cost effective manner. There's no economy of scale in operating this way. The Cherryvale district has expressed interest in this same type of strategy. Staff can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Jay. Counselor Blum?
A quick question, Jay, you're talking about the, looking at the green on the map here. We're talking about both areas of trunk line project and the add alt alternative.
Yes, we're, we are seeking approval for both of those projects.
Okay. So ahead.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yeah, Jay, and maybe, maybe as much for Jessica, assuming Jessica, you can hear me as well. I, looking at the economics of this, you know, I just note that we are going to, under this proposal, we're going to be carrying these other districts for a number of years to the tune of six figures. And if we're earning 1.1% in our college trust account, we're, it's a couple thousand dollars maybe of interest accrued over a number of years. Most of that cherry veils paying down that, you know, 40 a year after their initial payment. I don't know, I don't know if it's worth discussing that with those other districts to see if there could be some kind of offset to that, but if I understand the predicament we're in and that, and that Public Works is trying to get this built and it's been stalled out for a long time. But if that money were otherwise sitting in our account not being advanced essentially for other districts, we would be $2,000 or more to the better over the course of the next few years. Grand scheme of things, I'm not sure it's worth it for us to go back and ask for them, but I'd like to open that up to some discussion. That's all I've got.
Counselor Gallagher?
Jay, give us some context on how it is that Southgate, the second largest district has a hundred percent of the money and these smaller districts are cutting deals. They've had fair warning for years now and is it just, is it, they haven't managed it well?
With most of the small 13 or so smaller districts throughout the city, they are more or less just homeowners associations. A lot of them collect minimal to no monthly or yearly dues. A lot of them have no capital in the bank if anything were to go wrong. Their, the members of those districts would have to come up with some money pretty fast. Southgate took over a small district that used to be G I D number one, which was a Greenwood Village Improvement District. They had actually been collecting funds for years and years. So their bank account, when they turned that over to Southgate, had the money in it ready for this project. These other small districts, you know, even though we've been telling them this is coming, Cherryvale just went to the voters last year and got approval for a tax hike and are starting to collect those funds, but they don't have those funds available. And that's in the bigger picture, that's pretty scary with the number of small districts that are out there that are probably not being managed to the standard that the state requires. And so that's why when we started this whole thing long before I was with the city, that was the whole point was to consolidate all those small districts and get them to a larger district or organization that can manage that. And when we started that, we ended up taking over three districts and then everything stopped. Nobody else was turning it over and wanted to go through the process of upgrading their lines before the city would take it over. So that's why these other districts, the smaller ones, don't have those funds.
So we potentially could have a real issue if some of these smaller districts had real problems where, where we had lines that failed and they did not have the money and how, help us understand what's the relationship? Who's the, who's the backstop when one of these things, one of these places fails?
That might be a better question for the city attorney. I don't know how that would get funded.
I don't know the answer to that right now.
I think.
History of agreements and a lot of paperwork to look through for that.
Yeah, and just, just council members, just let's keep in mind that this has been part of the master plan and our current master plan, and it's really important as we go forward that this get addressed in the new master plan. We've made absolute, Jay, have we made any strides in last, other than the consolidation of three small into ours? Any other strides?
Not that I know of, there are no other districts in the past 15 or 16 years that have done anything or approached us to consolidate.
Yeah, I would just suggest to council, this is an accident waiting to happen and we really need to get ahead of this. I'm glad, Jay, that you're, you're doing this and getting these, this trunk line, you know, funded and you know, and yeah, we're gonna have to cut I GAs, you know, but it's, it's, it's a precursor of, you know, one of these really has a problem. It's, and it's going to have to be funded, not, you know, three months of planning, it's funded the next week because you gotta get a contractor in there to solve the problem. Let's, we gotta get ahead of this is my point. Mike, this is Al, you raise a very good point on what would happen if these, one of these districts was to default on payment? What is our recourse to try and collect that money? Maybe Kathy, maybe you know that.
Default on payment if we cut them an I G A?
Yeah, if we're trying to collect 40,000 a year and they don't pay.
Well, that's what I'm going to be trying to figure out as I put together these I GAs.
So it would be specified in the I G A, right? How, how that would work?
Yes.
So, you know, if I could add, Dan, I always, I appreciate how thoughtful you are about all of these things and I think you raised a really good question. I, I guess my perspective is this is something that's good for us. It is good for the city to get out of the business of being responsible for sewer lines for 144 homes. So there is an advantage to us to getting this done and given to someone else. And I think perhaps in my estimation, I think that advantage, the benefit to us is perhaps worth the interest that we would forego on, you know, effectively loaning this money to the smaller districts. That's my personal opinion, but obviously others could differ and disagree, but I think you're absolutely right. It's an important part of the conversation. I also agree with Mike that this has been on the block for a very long time. And I, I do also, I know that these are kind of weird times to be taking on a big project like this, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we just, we need to, the time is right, we need to get it done.
Counselor. Counselor Wheel?
Oh, thank you, thank you. I'm kind of in the, well, I'm definitely in the same place on the interest part of it. On the one hand, we've taken on some debt through the C O Ps, so we have a true cost of capital. And also there's some compensation for risk when you loan, loan funds out. And, and so in that sense, it feels appropriate that we, you know, either offer them the opportunity to pay for it upfront or, you know, if they want to finance it, some kind of a competitive interest rate feels like it would be in order. I wonder if we have this financing in place and this five-year payment on the one hand, on the, with the longer one, does that delay our ability to search and find sewer district to take on the responsibility? If I understood you correctly, Jay, and, and correct me if I've misunderstood, it, it seems like we're looking to fix this up and then in effect, turn it over to somebody else, another sewer, sewer provider and get out of the business. Am I misunderstanding that?
No, that's correct.
Okay, would, would the delay of the payments, the, the, I guess we could, well, no, would the delay of the payments delay that turnover? You know, if, if we financed and affect financed some of the repairs?
I think what we'd do is, as part of the I G A, I think we'd make those I G As transferable to the, to the purchasing district so that then they would become responsible for the collection.
Would they do that or would they?
I think they would.
Um, the, the third, the third point I was wrestling with, and again, it's more in the form of a question, is the desire to finance these improvements on the part of those two other districts something that we could, really two-part question, could use as leverage to just assume the responsibility and would we want to do that? I don't know what condition the sewers are in, but it seems like it would be a lot simpler if we had, you know, less of a patchwork quilt when we're trying to talk to somebody else to turn this, this sewer system over. That was, Jay, maybe you can help me out on that. Are the, are the, are the two other systems, the ones that want financing, are they in bad shape? Or are they something we'd want to use the financing as just leverage to say, why don't you just turn it over to us? And then we've got a more elaborate system, if you will, to turn over as a single unit rather than pieces.
So Country Homes is, there's actually only a few of their homes that drain into our system. The rest of it is in a separate system and it goes to Metro wastewater to the north. So there's only eight houses or 18 houses, I'm sorry, in there. And their system's in pretty good shape. It's just a matter of they had budgeted what our estimates were for the last couple of years. It went up and they just don't have that money. They may decide as a board to just pay it all upfront or just wait till 2021 and pay the rest of it. Cherryvale, it's in the, it's, it's in about the same shape as our system. It's not the greatest, it needs work. But again, they've just begun collecting those funds to start paying us first and then paying for their upgrades. I feel that it's just best to, even though it's a little bit of a patchwork, that we, we use the approval of city council approving this contract to say, hey, it's go time because we've been trying to tell them for a number of years to, to start collecting these funds and get them in line and it's just not happening.
And my recommendation is, as a city, I think it's best for us to finish the work that we have in front of us and see if we can't get these lines transferred over to another district. Maybe it's Southgate, maybe it's another. And then try to have and encourage the smaller districts to join Southgate or whoever else may acquire the district we have.
Okay. A question related to that, don't, don't we have an obligation to, for these 182 homes to get them up to a certain standard before we transfer?
Yes, mo- most other districts won't look at the system until it's brought up and has been repaired and brought basically up to new. And that's what we'll do after we replace what lines need to be replaced. Then we'll line the entire system and it will be another 50 or 80 year system. You know, barring any major issues. But it's hard to have, to talk to other districts when all of this work needs to be done. They either want the money upfront to do that work or they just want it done and, and most of all, they want it done before they take it over and, and bring it into their projects.
Jay, help, help me understand, the, we do these trunk lines and we have 182 homes plus these other, three other districts. If there's a problem between the house and help me understand, if you've got someone that's half a mile from the trunk line and there's a problem in that run, whose problem is that?
So the way it works at these our policies, the, the line that goes from the house to any of our mains in the street. We're talking about a trunk line here, which is a bigger than our mains. We have mains that run through Cherry Ridge, through Cherry Moore and through Cherry Hills Rancho. Those we're still going to have to do some work on. They're smaller projects, they're in the streets, they're easier to get to. But if it's one of the city-owned lines, we're responsible for that. But we, homeowners take the responsibility from our line to their house.
So are we, your point is that we finished this trunk line, major endeavor and then we have a few cleanup projects with the main lines? And then we have something that's actually transferable to, you know, someone like Cherry Hill sanitation. What is it? The bulk of the art?
Yeah, the Cherry, City of Cherry Hills sanitation district or Southgate. Yeah, so it will be a few years before we can do a turnover because we have those smaller projects that we're going to have to finish up after this trunk line.
And then, so we would have a similar type of communication. Instead of talking about trunk lines, we'll be talking about main lines and it may affect certain districts. And then we'll fund that and we'll get that cleaned up and then we'll.
No, the main lines, the main lines, anything off of the trunk line is that we're responsible for is wholly responsible by the city. Once we do this trunk line, we don't have other districts involved with any of our work.
I see. And is the current funding that we pay every, that council proved years ago, is that going to get the financing that we need to be able to complete the mainline projects?
We hope it is until we, until we design those and get those bid out. We don't know the full extent of the cost of those smaller projects.
Hey, Jay, Mike, do you mind if I jump in? I got a question I'd like to ask, couple of questions. Jay, when did these, when did these three bidders get the bid packages, America West, C and L and Granite? When, when did they go out to bid?
Those went out in December.
So obviously the question I would first ask is, do, do we want to consider taking these back out? I mean, it's a pretty substantial number. Do you have any reason to believe that a million two worth of infrastructure can be done for less in today's bidding market than it was bid out in December or January?
You know, I've had a couple meetings through American Public Works Association, Colorado Asphalt Paving Association and asked those same questions. And everybody that's getting bids now are getting the same prices that we were getting earlier in the year. Even though the price of oil has gone down, the price of other products, pipe, rock, anything that we use in public works as well as labor is not going down. And nobody is seeing significant cost savings by rebidding or bidding now as compared to earlier in the year.
Okay. Did we, didn't we push two meetings ago, didn't we push out a chip seal project because of COVID?
We did, and that's because.
We pushed that out to, because we don't know what kind of losses we may have in our income. This one is.
Those were general fund related as this is a district and has its own separate funds.
Okay. And I, I guess my final comment and I still, you know, listening to, I don't, I don't know that we've heard from everybody yet, but if it sounds like, it sounds like these still have to go back to the other districts to tidy up I G As if we approve this package tonight. My suggestion, if we do get to the point where someone's making a motion on this, I'd like to see if it's no trouble, why wouldn't we at least ask the question of these other districts to build in at least something to match our cost of funds when we're financing theirs so that we're not financing it and actually paying, paying for it? Paying for the shortage of monies that we'd be collecting. So if we do get a motion on the floor tonight, I'd like to see if we could get it to include at least enough to cover our college trust interest that we'd be earning on that money.
Counselor Stefavi?
Yes, I think there were a lot of good points raised. I'm in support of it in terms of, you know, again, we gotta do this, we gotta get this. We gotta take care of this before it becomes a problem that we're gonna, then at that point in an emergency case, try to throw, throw money at it. So that I'm in agreement with. In terms of, you know, we gotta make sure that whatever interest rate we're going to end up charging them, I'm in agreement with all the comments that were made that it gotta be with the industry standard. So we're not, you know, basically just loaning money at very low interest. And the third point that was brought up around potentially, if you want, you know, get rebid numbers. I understand that right now, these contractors are coming back and they come up with the same number possibly. But it doesn't mean that the end user is actually signing these contracts. And when, instead of 10 of these contracts getting signed, it goes down to six or seven or eight of them. Then at that point, I think some of the, some of these companies may consider providing a little bit discounts to win these contracts because they do want to go ahead and secure work for the next one to two years. So, you know, I'm, I'm sort of again leaning toward what counsel Sheldon was saying. I do think that we need to ask for rebid numbers. And maybe we wait, you know, a month or so before we ask for rebids. I think the numbers, in my opinion, we may see lower numbers in, in couple of months. But that would be my only suggestion. But at the same time, I'm not sure again, the level of urgency is that do we have to actually start it next month? Or can we postpone it for a couple more months? Anyway, that was just a comment, but in terms of a question, Jay, out of the three bids, the staff has recommended C and L water. And I think the, the word that you used was that it was the lowest qualified bidder. So I assumed then after, you know, when you guys looked at American West, you found out that it was not qualified, is that what happened? I'm trying to understand that although it's only 40K less for, you know, probably less than two or three percent of the total budget, but why are they not qualified?
There was a number of reasons. We had very specific instructions written out in the bid documents. First one was you had to have all of your subcontractors names and all of your subcontractors references in the packet. They put on their subcontractors, all of their paper. They put on their subcontractors, all of their paperwork said to be determined. There's no way we can check references on to be determined. Second of all, the, uh, con- the bid document specifically said mobilization cannot be more than five percent of the bid. Theirs was closer to twenty-nine percent. I have issues trying to get a contractor that can't even follow directions in the bid process. I can't trust that they're gonna do that during the construction process.
That, that makes sense.
Therefore, we dis- we disqualified them.
Okay, no, that's good, thank you. And then tell me about then, in, in terms of quality, quality of the work responsiveness, you know, that you saw during the, during the due diligence process, getting the bids. Um, was granite, what is that, granite inliner? Uh, better than C L and water in terms of their quality? I'm trying to understand their prices, but you know, three hundred seventy, eighty K more. Were they a lot better in terms of quality or what was your feeling in terms of quality for those two?
We don't do any background checks on the high bidder. We would only do that if they were being considered for the bid.
Okay, no, the only, the only reason I ask here is that again, I think we might be in a position that if they turn out to be better, you know, you can always go to them and say, this is what C N L water gave us in terms of proposal. Are you willing to match it? And if they're better, give them, give it to the better person. In other words, you know, I just, um, I know our bidding process is, is that's how we do in a city. You know, in the industry, we have reverse bidding. Don't show the numbers, we basically go back to them and say, this is our highest number, you know, the lowest number. Go ahead and bid if you can come close to it. So I mean, you know, I understand this, but I'm, um, if we're gonna spend one point four million dollars, um, one was considerably higher, one was disqualified, so we say C L and water is the best one. And I, I'm not, again, I, I, that's not how I would bid this out. Um, I would at least put, are there a couple more people you can go and get bids from? Or is this pretty much, this is a sort of a service that is very limited to the number of providers or the service providers out there?
Let, let me answer that, Councilmember Sufabi. When, uh, public agency puts projects out to bid, we don't have the luxury of picking who gets to bid on these. Uh, whoever puts their bid in, uh, as a public agency, we usually go with the low bidder unless they're shown to be unqualified or unresponsive to the bid. And if, if that's the case, which is what happened here, we go to the next lowest bidder. Uh, we don't negotiate with the, any of the bidders at that point in time to say, you know, the third one or the fourth one or the fifth one, if you can bring your prices down, we'll, we'll hire you. That's not how state law works with our bidding process. We have to, uh, pick the lowest bidder and if they're qualified and they're responsible, that's who we'll, we'll pick as an agency.
Okay, no, thanks for that clarification for me. So Jim, any idea how many, so, you know, basically was that there were ten or twelve of these companies around and three of them, we decided to, to bid on our project? Is that what happened?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so then my question goes back to, I think the situation when, when you guys put this bid out in November, December, when it was, it was a very different environment versus right now. If you actually do go back and put this bid out there, are we still gonna get three bids or are we now gonna get five companies that are gonna come and bid on this? I don't know the answer. It's just that I know the situation right now and for the next year or two years, it's going to be very different compared to, you know, three, four months ago, that's all.
Yeah. I, I fully understand that and, and there's some logic. I've had some experience in rebidding projects, thinking that, uh, if we split them a different way, we'll come in with a lower bid. Or if we somehow exclude or add some things, we'll get more bidders. Uh, every time I've rebid, I've had an unpleasant experience. In fact, that the prices have come in higher and I don't know why that is. But that's just been my experience. And my gut feel is we, and Jay, I know, uh, once we picked a low bidder, negotiated some of the items and found ways to save money. But if we, uh, rebid it, I'm afraid that we're gonna end up with something higher, uh, which would be really, uh, poor, and I think at this point in time, we've got a, a pretty good price. I don't know that we'll save any money by rebidding the project. And again, that's just my gut feel, Councilmember.
Okay.
Hey, I, thank you. I would, um, point out to everybody too, that, that, you know, staff, the memo indicates the staff went back and so the total is really one point two after you did some, and reducing the scope of the, of the bid and working with C N L who's been, um, our operators for, for a few years, that's kind of important too to remember. I think if we rebid, that mean, yeah, I, I kind of agree with Jim that we may be kind of breaching some trust to actually negotiate it down from their bid and then go back and rebid it again. Uh, we wouldn't look, the optics wouldn't be great.
Jay, um, have you talked to C N L lately about this, this bid? Are they still in business?
Yes, yes, we actually renegotiated after we got the bid, we went through and in our, uh, after we started talking, we didn't reduce the scope. They had some ideas of how to do some sections a little different to save us some money. But the final number that we got back from them, we didn't get back, that back to them till the end of February, early March. They're still in business, they do, uh, a majority of the small districts throughout the metro area. Um, and they are a very strong company, they know our system, they've been in all of those easements. They understand our residents. Um, so I, I think the negotiation we did, that we've got a pretty good number and that, uh, I don't think it's gonna go down at this point.
Hey Jay, a question for you. This is a tough project, obviously, cause it's going through easements and in some cases, I, what looks like this is gonna go along a little dry creek and, and we're gonna be going through, the project's gonna go through people's backyards and we're gonna have some very unhappy residents. The question specifically is who, when the digging takes place and landscape, expensive landscaping, uh, is destroyed, who has to foot that bill?
That bill will be footed by the city. We, uh, when we bid this, um, we bid it so they, the, the contractor has to put it back, but that's sod and irrigation. If it's trees and landscaping, that's not included. That would be the city negotiating with the homeowners at that point as to what we could and would replace. Most of these homeowners probably don't realize that they have these easements through their yards. Their title work has it. It probably says, do not put any landscaping over this. But we've always taken the position that we will, uh, try to make our residents whole. Um, and not just, uh, go in there, wreck it and, and not put it back.
Good policy.
Although I, I think you were saying in, at times in the past, some of it's even like hardscape and whatever. I, I doubt that we'd be able to afford to do that, but I guess we'll just have to look at each case or you'll have to look at each case, we won't.
And, and we have-
Go ahead, Mike.
So some of these, um, some of these have not collected enough money. So here, it's really interesting, Southgate, they've got the money, they've got, they had, they had to collect a lot of money, they got in front of it. They collected the money, they're gonna pay a hundred percent. And yet we have two others who have just not managed their money very well and have not demanded. Do we as a community have any say in mandating to these smaller sewer districts who are not doing a good job of collecting money to start doing a better job of collecting money? Because if, if we don't have that, uh, we, we gotta change behavior. Hey, cause it's, it's potentially a larger problem and it really is frustrating to see the largest one there, they have no problem getting in front of it. And they collected all the money and they've got the biggest nut to collect. And yet the smaller ones didn't demand of the money, didn't demand of their citizens to get the money. And that, those people have the money and, but they didn't manage it well. So do we as a community have the ability to affect that behavior?
I would have to defer that to the city attorney.
The city attorney is going to research that question. Uh, Marcus in our firm does a lot of work with special districts and I'll be giving him a call tomorrow to ask him uh, what kind of leverage we have. Keeping in mind that it's for the short term, right? The goal would be to eventually, uh, move these districts off the city's books. Um, but yeah, I'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I, Mike, I suspect the answer is we don't have much. And that's, and that's why, and that's, that's, that was the, that was why we've talked about this for years and years and years, to get rid of these. Combine them all and get out of the sewer business. I mean, you're right, that this is a problem waiting to happen. I mean, we've had other sewer issues in Cherry Hills Village and, and that's what happens. I mean, they don't work, they plug up and the damage that's caused is far more than we're talking about here very quickly if it doesn't work. So, um, you know, that's why we, the cities realized years ago that we wanna try to get all these, um, little entities out of the way that we really can't control and, and, and give it to somebody who can manage it well and do it right, so.
And I, I do, I wanna, you know, express, I suspect that, I, I just wanna make sure that it doesn't seem quite as deliberate as maybe it sounds. You know, I think a lot of these really smaller districts are volunteer-run and your sewer is the thing that you don't worry about until you do. You know, I mean, I think a lot of them don't even know where it goes, who takes it, who. Um, and so I, I, I think it's just, um, kinda out of sight, out of mind for a lot of people.
A lot of these, you know, the developers built the homes and put in the sewer and then left, right?
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know that we can criticize, but HOAs are, were left holding the bag. They're, they're not sewer experts either, you know, which is the reason we wanted to get, get them out of this business.
Yeah. Well, and they do from time to time, like my district assessed, uh, money or made us, you know, get sump pumps off the line, you know, and we're gonna get fined and that's not very popular to do. And it, it, it's a disincentive to folks to actually, uh, do what they're supposed to and, and maybe entitled to do, you know? So it's, I agree with all of what Mayor Tim Brown just said and then add on the complexity of neighbors. Assessing dollars against neighbors makes it even harder.
Jay, Jay, a question here. In terms of, um, you know, going back to the discussion around, you know, we wanna make sure the neigh, you know, the neighbors or the areas that we, we damaged during this process, which is not including this bid. We're gonna go and try to do the best we can do and put them in the proper condition. When you're talking about such a large number of properties, do you have any idea, do you have an estimate, best case scenario, worst case scenario? That what that cost would be? Is that cost gonna be in order of, you know, thousand dollar per, per, per individual house, five hundred dollar, what is the average? Um, if somebody has planted, you know, ten fancy trees right on top of that line? So what is that number? I'm doing, I'm trying to understand, is it a hundred thousand or is it another three, four hundred thousand? Or is it something that you can dig into a little bit more, come up with a rough estimate and come back to us?
That would be hard to get a rough estimate, that's why we put that five consent, five percent contingency, which is just around a hundred thousand. Um, some of the value engineering that we did was looking at properties that we knew were very heavily landscaped and assessing, can we do a point repair? Instead of taking out a whole section of line. Um, so we've taken, there was three or four properties that when we walked the project, we noticed and talked about. Um, but it would be very difficult to, to come up with an exact number. I can try to, uh, go through and look at each property and see if it's just sod or is there hardscape involved? Um, so I can try to, uh, come up with a better estimate.
And the only reason I say that, I just look at, for example, when a couple of years ago, when I was doing landscaping, how much money I ended up spending and, and I look at the houses and properties around me and, and then, you know, I'm not the expert in this arena, you guys are, but you know, a hundred K for all these houses for landscaping, to me, it's, it's, it seemed to be too low.
And it's not a hundred. If it, if five percent is, is, is more like fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand is just so, such a low number, I think this is going to be, it's off by several folds, uh, three or four folds maybe, but I think I would be interested to know. Not that it's gonna stop us from doing the work. We still gotta do this, but I think we just gotta come up with more realistic numbers, um, at least for a budget purpose.
You know, I, I guess as I'm listening to the, the discussion, and again, you know, Jim, Jay, help me if I'm misunderstanding, but it sounds to me like this project gets us a lot closer to having a transferable system. So it feels like it's progress in that sense. Um, if I understood correctly, we've got about half of this, um, uh, load and we've got a reserve or accumulated funds that should cover considerably. I mean, even if the, even if the, uh, repairs came in at a hundred rather than fifty or, or something like that, that there are, um, a number of fu- enough funds, sufficient funds in that sewer account, that, that, that shouldn't be a, a showstopper. And even if, even if somebody came back and said, okay, well, it's gonna cost a hundred and fifty rather than a hundred, would we not do it? I think we would end up doing it. Doesn't sound like there's savings for rebidding. Uh, so it, it sort of feels to me like we've, I don't know, I, you know, I mean, it, it feels to me like it's sort of a no-brainer, uh, we ought to just move forward, but that's one guy's opinion.
Randy, I think the way I look at it is, you know, I, I respect the comments made, we assume that there is no saving in bidding. We assume that this is going to be only, there are a lot of assumptions we're making here. And we're not talking about a fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about a project that is pretty expensive. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, it's just that, you know, it would be nice to refine these numbers a little bit if we can, but if you have to go ahead and start right away, I, I will be supportive of it.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what the condition is and maybe Jay can enlighten us a little bit on that. But I, you know, I mean, I, I understand your point. Part of me says, you know, we've, we've asked our in-house experts and they've given us an opinion uh, on the potential for savings or, or not. Uh, you know, so we could go ahead and go out and rebid it, but I, that's gonna add months and months to, to this whole project, which I think it's been uh, years and years leading up to now. I don't know, I've, I've got more of a bias toward moving forward than I do, um, if I believe there was money there to be had, but again, we, I have to rely on the experts.
All right, any other thoughts or comments or what's the pleasure of Council members?
Uh, I've got one, a couple of questions for Jay. Um, based on the work that we've gotta do on the main lines, do we have any rough estimate? Cause the fund balance after we do this, we'd leave about five hundred thirty thousand with some receivables coming in from the other districts. Uh, do we have any idea what the mainline repairs, any rough estimate in the timing for that? If we're gonna try and turn the entire system over?
Um, we have an idea of what the issues are and, and where they are. Um, when we looked at the mainline, we looked at all of the systems. Um, but I don't have a number, we've been concentrating on this uh, trunk line. Um, but I don't have a number at this point as to, to what those would be. Those are mostly in streets, so the price will be less than going through backyards and trail easements. Um, it would take a while to get a number and as we've seen, I mean, we were getting estimates from different engineers and they weren't even close when we got the bids on this one.
Well, my, my question, my, my question is, Jay, do you feel comfortable having a, a reserve balance of five thirty? Knowing that, and, and question, second question is timing on when we're gonna do those? Do you feel comfortable with that balance and we're not gonna run into issues on this?
Yes.
Okay, and then-
I think that balance will be enough for us to at least start picking away at these other portions of the lines and have enough in reserves, if anything. and have enough in reserves if anything were to, uh, go wrong.
The, the next thing, and I'm of the ilk that we go ahead and, and make a motion here, but my question for Kathy is how well prepared can we be to if they default? Because these are all like, uh, somebody discussed HOA run districts, not like Southgate, which we deal with all the time, that we would be able to go back, do we have, uh, lien rights or how would we go about, uh, remedying that if they did, did default?
That's something I need to, to figure out. This is just kind of come into my world fairly recently, get the contract together and I've started thinking about drafting the IGA. So, um, I can respond to you offline with some strategies once I've had some time to dig into that. If that's something you would like.
My question is true on a motion, should we put a contingency on there that we have some type of comfort level that if there is a default, uh, dealing with home mortgage, it would be able to recover the money?
Yeah, sure. With that, instruction to the staff and to the city attorney to negotiate, negotiate that provision and for, for security for our, for lending.
Right.
As, as long as we don't become owner of their district.
No, we'd want to be owner of their homes.
Yeah, if we have a lien against a home.
If they default, you get ownership of the district, there you go.
That's not a win, yeah.
It is proposition.
All right, any other thoughts or comments? I guess I hear some sentiment to mo, to motion, so.
I could probably take a crack at one, Al, unless you want to.
No, go ahead, let's see where we add there at the end, go ahead.
Okay. I moved to approve the construction contract with C N L Water Solutions, Inc. In the amount of one million, one hundred seventy-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And to approve an additional expenditure of a five percent owner contingency for a total maximum expenditure of one million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, zero cents. With the condition that intergovernmental agreements with country homes and Cherryvale districts for funding, including enough to cover our lost cost of money for those amounts financed. And subject to staff and legal counsel confirming the city's protection under a default of payment scenario be mutually executed prior to the final signature, city signature of the construction contract.
I think that's good, I will second it then.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laura, could we have a roll call?
Counselor Stefavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
All right, passing, thank you, Jay, for all the work you've done on this, I really appreciate it. It is a, um, it's not, this is not an easy lift. It's a long time coming, you finally gotten there after all these years. So thank you for the progress and effort you've put into it. Okay. Move now, no more new business, moving out to me, to reports, I have a, of a few. First off, the most calls I've been getting recently are about, about pools and HOA pool. We've gotten several about what, when they're going to open. I was on a call today with the Tri-County Health and their position is that pools can't be opened now. That they're closed until further, but the, um, there's some question about that. The section they're talking about is public pools, so I didn't know about HOA pools, whether they're really public or how you could, maybe you could finagle it. But I think it's going to be moot because I think the governor is going to come out with more, um, guidelines about what's going to happen with pools. Yes, that's, it's a big issue, I think, for, um, our community. And I think that it will come out before the 27th anyway. May not give people a lot of time, but that's when his, um, his emergency order has to be renewed. So, um, we're expecting more, as I, and I mentioned that the restaurant, um, guidelines came out for reopening those, proposed guidelines came out today, um, and they'd be for comment and they'd be implemented next week or the end, the end of next week. And that's the proposal that the governor's talked about of opening the restaurants on a limited basis. Uh, let's see, Friday we'll have a, um, C M L meeting, but as you, you all may know, the annual C M L meeting's been canceled. Um, it was scheduled for Westminster, so that's off. Probably reschedule next fall, I hope, in a smaller kind of event, because they have to have an annual meeting and they have to have elections. So, but that was a big hit to Westminster, losing that, uh, yes, they're going to reschedule Westminster in 2026. I think everybody laughed because nobody, nobody would be in office then, nobody would be around. And it's when it comes back to Westminster. There's a call tomorrow night with Tri-County Health. If you want to join in, seven o'clock where they, they might say something about pools, I don't know, but that's a, that's a, it's a town hall. I think that's about it. Oh, I did, um, did want to raise with everybody, um, you know, the next meeting, next meeting is just in two weeks, uh, June. I forget the date. It's actually fourth or fifth. Second. So it's really in two weeks and if we want to meet by, um, in person or have a Zoom meeting or how everybody, what everybody's feeling is about it, I think there's kind of different, cities are doing different things. I think we're open up, a lot of cities have not opened up yet, um, but we've opened City Hall and, uh, and we, we certainly could meet within the current guidelines because it's just, it's just the 10-person issue. And that, oh, and Kathy told me that there's actually an exemption now for the 10-person. So the governor said, no, that 10-person doesn't apply to governments. So if we wanted to, we could, we could certainly meet, we could socially distance and, and do our thing. So I wanted to get folks' thoughts about that. And that's.
Well, I, I, are you looking for feedback on that right now, Mayor?
Sure, yeah, you want to go ahead?
I, for one, I, I don't, I, I don't see enough going on right now in the city to warrant coming in. I mean, this is working pretty effectively. I don't think we're putting any citizens out by not opening our doors to a in-person meeting. And, you know, if we had a, uh, I know we've got some, um, community development action, uh, activity going on with floodplain permits and Cherry Hills Country Club coming in. If those were really hot and, and coming in right now and we're having to hear cases, I would, I would think, uh, differently maybe about it, but with, with the little agendas that we've been having, I think this is perfectly adequate and frankly safer.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed. And I will say that the June 2nd agenda right now is very light. Obviously there's no community development or land development projects on, on that agenda.
And what about the, um, what about the, uh, since we're talking about whether or not to do this in person or not? How, what does that mean to the master plan process? And are we getting to the point where we're starting to push dates and postponing deadlines on that with our consultants?
Director Famer?
Yes, I can jump in on that.
Hi.
We, uh, we have been continuing to have Zoom meetings with planning and zoning. But, you know, I think they have really helped guide the process of slowing down at this point because, uh, you know, right out of the gate, uh, there, the feeling is that public input in a public process, meaning not just online only, um, is really beneficial to, to really help justify and, um, signify the importance of, you know, the public providing that input. So I would offer that it is probably slowing down some. P and Z is attempting to do everything they can in the meantime, wi, within that limitation. You know, we met last month and will be, um, I'm sorry, this month and we'll be meeting again next month to discuss, you know, survey questions and things like that, but it is slowing down, yes.
Okay. All right, well, with all that in mind, and I know that not everybody had a chance to chime in there. I think we, I think we postponed June 3rd, not postponed, I'm sorry.
Zoom, zoom, zoom this.
Zoom it, zoom it.
Zoom it, all right. All right, so, um, other reports from counsel, um, Counselor Blum?
A couple of things, number one, I want to thank Jay for finding controller for the lights with C dot.
Yeah.
Good job, Jay. A couple of questions, I've got one is for Jim, maybe you can deal with it on your, uh, report, Jim, on the FEMA funds. Uh, what we have to do to try and get those funds, I think it's about six hundred thousand dollars. The question for Jessica, and I don't know if Jessica want to talk about now or, uh, looking at your report, you talked about the sales tax collection, uh, being for three months. Is that for both 2019 and 2020? Because we're way ahead of schedule through the end of March, if that's right. Jessica?
You're muted, Jessica.
Sorry about that. Do you want me to address that during my report or now?
Well, you can, I mean, the question looked like we're way ahead of schedule on the sales tax for the end of March. And I, I guess comparing 19 with 20, uh, those are both, uh, January through March on both of those. And I guess you can talk about it in your report, uh, because we really can't get a feel, I guess, until you get the April collection, so.
That is, that is correct.
Why don't you do that on your report and then Jim, if you can address the FEMA funds on your report, that'd be great. Uh, no other comments?
How's Sheldon?
Just one thing, um, Jay and, and Jim, did, um, did we get those letters out to the citizens along Quincy that are going to be impacted by the undergrounding of the utility lines? I don't know that I ever saw anything final after I sent you guys some comments and I'd like to make sure that we're staying on top of that, getting communication out to those, to those homeowners who will be impacted.
Uh, I can answer that, those are going out tomorrow. We, uh, Jim and I talked about it and, um, we took your comments and, uh, put that together and, uh, actually got those in to, uh, get all the envelopes and letters printed up. I'll sign those and those will go out first thing tomorrow.
And is there a, I, I forgot to ask you this real general question initially. Is there, is there another letter that's going to go out to everyone else but the seven homeowners? At least the people who back up to the, to the, uh, varying, telling them at least a little bit about what's going on? Or did, did, maybe I remember you saying that you were going to wait until we had a schedule or something to give to them?
Yes, we plan on doing that and be in communication with those as soon as we have, uh, schedule from Excel. Um, we will get it out on our social media and then anybody that's directly adjacent to those prop, to the, to Quincy through that area, we will get out another letter.
That's great, thank you, appreciate your work, uh, that's all I've got.
Counselor Gallagher?
Want to recognize, uh, Jim Harwood and George Rents, uh, for their efforts to support food banks, helping those in need that have been affected by COVID-19. That, that's a grassroots effort that took place, um, in the last three weeks. It was in, it's going to be in the mayor's report, uh, and, and Mayor Stewart was integral in helping that effort in directing, uh, Dr. Harwood, but it's, uh, it's just great to see our citizens stepping up and, um, and contributing. I think he's, he's tapped on nine thousand dollars so far.
Oh, it's more than that now, latest report.
Yep, so good stuff. End of report.
Counselor Brown?
Um, I don't really have, uh, much to report. I would just say that, you know, right before all this happened, Denver made a change to the light at Colorado and Hamden. They put in a left turn signal and in the process they changed the timing pretty substantially. And we were having a lot of backup problems right before this happened. And then, of course, all the traffic kind of went away. Those problems are coming back. You know, three o'clock on a Sunday afternoon and it was backed up all, westbound was backed up all the way to Dahlia and beyond. That is, once traffic really starts to pick up, that is going to be a problem. So, um, I don't know, you know, we don't have any control necessarily, it's Denver, but if we can remind them, um, that that problem is still there, I think that would be helpful. Cause it's crazy to see that much traffic backed up on a Sunday in the middle of all of this.
I, I second that, I, I was there sitting in that traffic too, that is crazy.
It is crazy.
So it's just bad time, the, the signals are not timed correctly. Counselor Wheel?
Dr. Cog's been relatively quiet, the meetings have been more informative, uh, than, than decision-making. We've got another one tomorrow night. Beyond that, no report.
Counselor Stefavi?
No report.
All right, um, next up, man, who's your board?
Uh, good evening, counsel. As the mayor alluded to, uh, City Hall is officially open and we have, uh, following all the protocols, we've got screens up for the front desk, uh, plexiglass that is helpful. We've got gloves and masks available if anybody comes in. It is mandatory to have a mask on when you come into City Hall. And, um, we're using social distancing. We've put up additional tables in front of the front desk so that, uh, there's extra spacing between anybody coming in and our staff. Our staff at, up at the front desk is all wearing masks and, and also sanitizing as well. We will be holding court at the end of the month and this will be our first effort at holding court. Uh, a lot of the same protocols, we will only allow up to 10 people maximum within the courtroom at any given time. The prosecutor will call up to three people to negotiate any, uh, plea bargain deals and then we'll provide protection again for the judge and any staff up there. Uh, just as a side note, we are going to be looking for a new bailiff. It's a part-time position, only, uh, two days a month usually. And, uh, we pay a, a whole hundred dollars, uh, session. So if you know anybody who's looking to get some extra cash, uh, we'll advertise that in the, I believe it'll be not until the July, uh, crier. So you know anybody who's interested, uh, let them call Jessica.
I, I assume you'd have to be older than 12 years old.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to be older than 12. So, um, in addition to that, uh, this weekend's Memorial Day, I know Denver First Church is going to have a drive-in ceremony where people will stay in their cars and have a service, uh, uh, in their parking lot. And I know other churches, uh, throughout the region are doing something similar to that. Today Cherry Hills Elementary kind of had a graduation drive-by and there was a lot of cars that came by with, uh, streamers and balloons and it was fun to see. Uh, I'm not sure, all the social distancing, distancing protocols were carried out, but, uh, they certainly tried. And then, uh, with regards to, uh, traffic at Colorado, certainly it's almost impossible with the way traffic patterns are right now to get a good timing. And certainly if Sunday is a problem, we can talk to them about the Sunday. If, if, uh, if you happen to have snapped a picture of what was going on, send it to me and I'll be happy.
Yeah, I did and I will actually, it's not a great picture because I was in my car, but, um, I will.
Well, we have a good contact over there and they seem fairly responsive, uh, but, uh, we'll, we'll certainly send them that type of information. And maybe they can do something on an interim basis till traffic starts really getting back to normal. And then finally with FEMA funds, uh, as Councilmember Blum, uh, announced, uh, we have about six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that is available to the city. Today we received a FAQ of what that money could be spent on and based on the FAQ, nobody knows. And so it's really difficult to figure out. We're kind of trying to pile up a list of things that might be eligible, everything from, uh, who knows? Getting monitors with a camera and a microphone so that we can actually do this from the office as compared to home might be something, uh, to repairing, uh, maybe some of our trails. We believe that all of the COVID-19 P P E would be covered and we're looking at acquiring some additional, uh, items from there. And then it gets really tricky after that. And so we're still kind of waiting and following the lead. Many other cities have much more complicated issues than we have and we'll be tracking what everybody might be spending their money on and trying to make sure that with our allocation that we utilize it to the maximum.
It's frequently asked questions, not frequently answered.
I don't think there was hardly any answers in that question there, so, uh, but it was about a three or four. But it was about a three or four-page list of different topics of what might be able to be used for. And certainly we'll explore all of those. And that's all I have, and certainly we can open it up to the rest of the staff if they have any additional comments.
I'll just jump in for a moment, I just wanted to pass along that I'm sure counsel noticed in the report that building permit activity was down last month, which was expected. However, I do want to report that last week we did issue three new single-family home permits. So that is always good for those monthly report numbers. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And if I may, to answer Counselor Blum's question, he is correct. The sales tax collection comparison that was in the staff report was January through March for both two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty. So the sales tax collections were up. We started receiving April sales tax collections yesterday, they're actually due tomorrow. Some of the vendors have been remitting higher than expected and some have been remitting lower than expected. So it's about average. I'll have a better idea towards the end of the week and be sure to include it in my Friday update.
And Mayor, I forgot, I have one more item. The county, as part of that distribution of those funds, we will be signing an I G A with the county as will all the cities in Arapahoe County. The city attorneys from all the different cities have got together, made comments. The I G A then went back to the county for final review, which promptly rejected almost all those comments. But I don't think they will have any big effect on us at the end of the day. And when that I G A is ready to be signed, I, I will sign it as part of an emergency declaration and then bring it back to counsel for approval at a date after that.
Okay.
It is not a loan, right? There's not, nothing like, at all like the PPP.
No, it's, it's money you have to justify what you're going to spend it on before they'll give it to you, though. So, yeah, it's not.
If we can only justify a hundred thousand dollars, that's all we justify and that's what we submit for?
That's correct.
And it will be subject to audit and all kinds of constraints. And so be careful what you ask for kind of a thing, how many strings do you attach to your request, so.
Yep.
I lost a visual here, do we lose something here? This is Al.
No.
You lost visuals?
I.
We can see you.
We can see you fine. See you fine.
Okay, Mayor, that's all staff report.
Okay. All right, then, city attorney?
I don't have any report, other than I've been super busy with the day-to-day business of the city on top of COVID-related issues and some other matters. So, yeah, I continue to stay quite busy.
Well, that's good.
It's good, yeah. Oh, and my fees might be subject to reimbursement from that I G A, my COVID-related fees, so there's.
Get track of those.
We have been, in fact, I, when this first all came down, I, I talked with, I think it was Catherine first and said, just start tracking everything. And I've been, you know, I think my invoices are, are trackable too, so.
And by the way, I'd just like to give a nice thank you to Kathy as her firm reduced their fees for the last month by fifteen percent, which is greatly appreciated as part of the COVID response. So thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, it's our pleasure to continue to serve the city.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we can move into next gen admission executive session, which we will still need our city attorney in. She can stay and city manager?
Yes.
We need a motion though for, first, a motion and a roll call for going into.
Oh.
Do you need the motion?
Probably.
Anyone, anyone can make it.
Yeah. Andy, I don't have it, I'm sorry.
I can, I can shoot it to you real quick, I think.
It's on our agenda if somebody hasn't.
It is on the agenda, but you have to pull it up on the.
Online, yeah, it's not on the one that I have.
Let me email this.
I move that we adjourn into executive session pursuant to C R S section twenty-four dash six dash, is that four oh two?
Yes.
Four oh two four E.
Four E and twenty-six dash six dash four oh two four F for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators and discussing personnel matters concerning the city manager position. And upon conclusion of the executive session, adjourning.
Second. Motion and a second, do we have a roll call, Laura?
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous agreement to proceed into executive session. And Laura, help us now how we're going to do that.
Yeah, bear with me while we stop all the streaming and such.